Councilmember Spadefor.
Present.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
I am also participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan. My apologies.
Councilmember Wood.
Present and participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Present, participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Garza.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts. Seven members present. You have a call.
Very good. First piece of business is a minutes from February 8th. Mr. Vice President.
Yep, I would move the meeting that is presented.
All right, there has been a motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Very good. Next item for business is public comment on agenda items. I will note that I did, I spoke with the mayor this morning and we're going to forego item B for tonight. And he can address why if you're curious, but just the timing isn't going to work for today. We will do it before the budget is presented to us. It just won't be this evening, but for those of you in the public who may have been wanting to address us on item B, we'll, we'll still allow it this evening, even though it won't be discussed this evening. So if you want to participate in public comment, please raise your hand. Option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on a PC, star nine on your phone, or there's a raise hand button on your touchscreen device, generally speaking. Seeing none, I will close out public comment and ask that our City TV folks, please bring in the next presenters from the mayor's art and cultural commission who have been patiently waiting for us to find a vacancy on our community of the whole agenda where they could come in and speak to us for a few moments about the work that they're doing on the mayor's arts and cultural commission. So I know Barb Whitney and Stephanie Vasco are here. So I will turn it over to the two of you or the mayor, if you want to set it up. It's your commission. I'll just, you know, I'll just start and I want to thank Stephanie and Barb. This is, this commission has been, it's been just so much work and these two women really stepped up as does everybody on, on this, this arts and culture commission. Really that's, they, they give a report every year and I think we send it to council every year. So you've all had a chance to take a look at it. But the, the vibrancy that we're seeing in Lansing is just incredible. I think maybe one or both of them were here during the budget last year to talk about some of the arts funding and really very excited. I don't usually come to committee of the whole, but I wanted to hear this for sure. And I'm really very excited to, to hear the presentation. So thank you, Barb. Thank you, Stephanie, for, for all of your hard work and your dedication to the city of Lansing and arts. It's really just incredibly impressive to me. So thank you. I don't know which one of you wants to start.
Stephanie, would you like to begin?
No, I think, I think you're going to start with the history.
Perfect. Happy to help. Yes, Co-Chair Vasco and I are honored to present this evening. We're thrilled to be here and we'd like to say thank you for all your support over what we know is decades of financial and bully pulpit and many other ways of support you provide to the arts and cultural sector. We really appreciate the opportunity to share and to build engagement in the arts through the work that we are doing and that you're supporting. So as you've probably heard a little bit about, we're eager to share the mayor's arts and culture commission's recent strategic conversations focused on access, diversity, equity and inclusion. And then after Co-Chair Vasco talks just for a few moments about that work, I'll point us in the direction of the annual report and look forward to illustrating some of the excellent work we're seeing provided by our committees within the commission.
So this evening I'm coming to you from beautiful downtown Lansing and I'm super privileged by the fact that I get to look out my window right now and see just great examples of public art, public art the city has funded during the summer, public art through Art Path, public art. That really just inspires me right as a, as a citizen of Lansing. When Barb and I were elected in September of last year, one of the first things that we did at our very first meeting as co-chairs was to kind of take a step back with the arts and cultural commission and think about who we wanted to be moving forward. So we led a brainstorming session with our group. And ultimately what we found that our overall goals for 2020 and the rest of 2021 would be, would be to listen to, amplify and respond to where we could for the needs of our local creatives in the Lansing area community and creative supporting organizations in an inclusive fashion through, but not limited to additional listening sessions. Barb's going to tell you a little bit more about that. More coverage on our social media, offering some virtual workshops, making the local arts grant process more inclusive. And we might talk a little bit about how we're moving that forward as well and adding additional and diverse voices to our commission. So this is something that we've asked our subcommittees. Most of the work that's done by the MAACC is done in subcommittee. Most of the work that our subcommittees do, we've asked them to use these lenses to frame it for this coming year. So we're looking forward to a report in 2021 that sees the addition of multiple listening sessions, thinking through how to serve the community, thinking through how to take down and taking down the barriers to applying for grants and making the processes around this more transparent. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Barb.
Thank you, Co-Chair Vasco. I'd like to share with you a little bit about our work on the executive committee. We also serve with Vice Chair Mike Marriott and you may know Clara Martinez, who serves as our secretary. We also have a really wonderful host of committees, including facilities and infrastructure, public art, campus relations, arts education, grants, talent and economic development, communications and advocacy and governance. So as you can see, this is a robust commission with a number of initiatives at hand and 33 of us who are the driving force in many ways for arts and culture in the community are available, interested, engaged in supporting these initiatives. So we think about the way we work as a commission and we're really designed to provide expertise, resources and support. And we're thinking through what that looks like as Stephanie mentioned on a daily basis, but also for the year to come, how we can do better, how we can make the work more accessible and how we can truly serve our community in a more robust way. So part of what we looked at this year is the 29 pager you will have received about the work we're doing full, complete with images and related to many of the different endeavors. I would say the critical pieces of what we wanted to make sure we shared with you today is that we're going strong. We have many things being funded. We noted in, I think it's important that I share this with you today. We noted in our annual report, the passing of one of our commissioners this year, Jack Davis, who was involved in a number of ways throughout the arts and cultural sector as well as the nonprofit sector in our area. But we also just wanted to take a moment to say thank you today. Thank you for your support and funding initiatives like Capital City Film Festival, like some of the work that we've done through the Art Path in partnership with the city of Lansing's Parks and Rec Department. We want to think about MICA and the work that they do in Blues and Jazz Fest and Reach Studio Art Center and their drop-in facility that they're offering for people to come and make art despite the pandemic. We also wanted to just take a moment to thank the folks who helped us create a fundraising feasibility study for Performing Arts Center. And the work that we did there was, was, was significant. It was important and it has been continued to be considered throughout the pandemic as a long-term option. So know that that work wasn't in any way wasted, but has been continued for further consideration moving forward. I think we wanted to just let you know how much your support means to all of us, to the community at large and to the mayor. The arts are really a way we've seen throughout the pandemic, people can take the time and the energy to have self-expression, to really fully recognize their own humanity and to engage in a way that's different, whether that's outside of their classroom, inside their classroom or otherwise. We're seeing people of all ages engage in the arts externally and inside of the arts and cultural agencies that make up the fabric of our arts and cultural sector. Co-Chair Vasco, would you like to say any other words?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Co-Chair Whitney just said and really come from a place where I'm very thankful for the city of Lansing and I'm thankful for the arts during the pandemic. One of the things I would say that the pandemic has taught us is that grief is such a large part of life and that the arts are one of those ways that we can really kind of engage with our grief and have a space for that. But they're also a place for joy and hopefulness. And I've been very grateful for the city of Lansing, for my fellow artists, for my fellow commissioner members, for holding the space for those, for making opportunities, for figuring out how to pivot events and how to pivot talks and just being able to connect and network with other artists and really to still try and thrive and have those moments of joy and moments of expression during this. So.
You're our champions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Also, if you want to forward our, the report that you mentioned to our office manager to make sure that we get it on file, that would be ideal. I mean, if you have already sent it, I'll double check. You know, I don't recall seeing it, but please do pass it along. I'm going to open it up to questions from my folks, but I want to first go up from, from the council rather, but first want to say thank you for all you do on the arts council. I know, you know, it's, 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 it's important work and we really appreciate it. So thanks for giving some of your time to the city. Any questions from council or comments? We made it easy on you, just, just so you know. Well, thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for your work.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I know Dominic from City TV who's here works, serves on the arts council with you all. So I'm sure he has, he says hi as well. So. All right. I was mistaken to B and C. We will not do. They were the same thing, just not the same thing, part of the same discussion. So that whole discussion will be moved to a different date, but we will do A. Cause that's going to be exciting. So I think we're going to pull over Rob. Is that correct? Mr. Whit again.
And Jake Brower.
And Jake Brower, excuse me, Rob and Jake Brower. There we are.
And if either one of you want to share your screen, Rob or Jake, you do have the opportunity.
All right. You're here with the general fund status report and the 2021 second quarter and vacancy report.
All right. Excuse me. All right. Thanks for having us here tonight. I think Jake is going to share. There he is. He's sharing a screen and I will shut up and let, let him dazzle you with budgetary news.
There you go. I have a, I'm fully unmuted and ready to go. So I hope you're able to see this screen. I'm presenting from the agenda minutes. You can see the first page of the first quarter or second quarter budget report. The following report represents the general fund budget to actuals as of December 31st, 2020. Updates to the general fund budget include the final audited fund balance as of June 30, 2020, being about 10.1 million, which results in a projected ending fund balance of 5.4 million. Fund balance policy is to target a fund balance between 12 and 15% of expenditures. This is approximately 16 to $20 million. The city is exploring various options in order to restore that fund balance levels. Not, you can see a updated graph of our general fund expenditures. We have separated retirement, this and the fixed costs, IT, information technology and fleet expenses from departmental budgets. So you can see the relative costs of providing fleet, fire, general government services, public service, community development and recreational and culture as part of our general fund budget. Not included in this report, we don't have the 2.5 million for the removal of the ACA penalties. There's been 7.3 million that we've received in federal stimulus money. And the general fund carryforwards, which occurred at the most recent council meeting before this. Moving on to our revenue summary and I'll scroll forward to the actual page here. You might recall that between our original FY21 budget proposal and the final adoption, we adjusted budgeted revenues down by approximately 12.5 million dollars. Overall, 63% of budgeted revenues have been received year to date relative to about 60% on average for the past three years. Going from the largest part of our budget to the least, property taxes are 35% of our budget and are relatively stable. Revenue source will receive the majority of these dollars right at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so there's not much change from the previous report. Income taxes are 24% of our budget and are underforming expectations as of producing this report. You'll recall that during our budget conversations, we reduced this amount, the budgeted amount by 20% from our original projections due to COVID-19 and the resulting changes. Due to COVID-19, monthly unemployment reached a peak of 24.8% in April 2020 relative to a peak of 17.9% during the Great Recession. And unlike the Great Recession, we can't rely on non-resident revenues due to a significant increase in remote work. The city does not, also does not receive income tax revenue from unemployment benefits, which are taxed by the state and federal governments. Moving on to return on equity, we have received half our budgeted 25 million dollars from the Board of Water and Light. This has been negotiated at a flat rate where we also receive 3% of revenue in excess of 409,836,066 dollars from retail and wholesale sales of chilled water, electric, steam, heat and water utilities, which we're not receiving, expecting Board of Water and Light to exceed that amount in this current year. And so you'll likely see exactly that 25 million dollar contribution. State revenues are 12% of the general fund budget and I'm pleased to say here we are exceeding our revenue estimates. We originally budgeted to decrease state revenue budget by about 15% from our original projections that started the budget season. It has turned out to be that state revenues sharing has remained flat from the previous year. And so this is a promising impact on our budget looking forward. The remaining parts of our revenue budget, charges for services, fines, forfeitures, licenses and permits, interest and rents represent about 10% of our budget, the largest of it, which being charges for services at 8 million, fines and forfeitures being the next largest and so forth. If there are any questions overall on revenues, so I'm available for answering those. Are there any questions from council members on the revenues? Councilmember Wood. Quick draw, Carol. I'll call you.
Thank you, President Spadefor. In looking at the income tax, how much of that is oh, reduced because of unemployment versus reduced because of delay in filing?
There's delays in filing would have affected the previous fiscal year. So most of that is due to multiple factors, which we can share the justification that was provided by the previous treasurer, now CSO and building the budget. There's a very nice spreadsheet that I don't have off the top of my head, but I can make available to you all, justifying exactly where that 20% comes from.
Okay, if, if you could provide that, I would appreciate it. I probably have it in the file, but it would probably be faster if you just sent it to me. My other question is, I know we were looking at doing state audits with the state income tax to see who filed there for city. How much are we recruiting? Any of that revenue?
I don't have that exact number off the top of my head, but I do know that we have implemented that, that those treasurer, Desiree Kirkland and Chief Strategy Officer have coordinated to make sure that that happens for this year and going forward.
Could you, could you check into that and get us a number as to what that is, please?
I'll write that down.
All right. Thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Any other questions? All right. Please move on, Jake. Moving on to general fund expenditures. The most important factor to consider is that overall departments are on track with their year-to-date expenditure targets where on this previous sheet, that target is basically a three-year revenues to budget average as of December 31st. The expenditure side takes into consideration the timing of payroll, specific contracts and other expenditures that occur on a timely basis. All departments are underneath that threshold except for economic development and planning, which is just modestly ahead. Work share is currently in effect until March 14, 2021, providing modest expenditure savings for employees who are able to participate. We're balancing the use of that program with city services in order to make sure that while we do want to see as many savings as possible, we need to make sure that we don't disrupt essential services. And so I can answer further questions here. Sure, I've got two. One from Councilmember Spitzley and then one, well, I don't have it's one. I'll say we'll start with Councilmember Spitzley and then we'll go to Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I just have a general thing. If Jake could walk me through. So our revenues are 130, 132 million roughly. But our expenditures are the 136. So the, with the net impact on the fund balance of 4 million, can you walk me through, you know, the expenditures that are causing the extra 4 million dollars?
Yeah. And I would say that I wouldn't look at that question personally from an expenditure side, but more dramatically from the revenue side. And so in the process of developing our FY21 budget, we had to cut, we initially presented a budget that increased fund balance by 500,000. And then in reviewing the impact of COVID, we found that that would produce a 12.5 million dollar shortfall. And so we were able to reduce expenditures by a factor of about 7.5 million. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head. However, if there was a portion of it, about 4.6 million that we decided to appropriate from fund balance. And you'll remember having modified the budget policies that if revenue were to decrease by an amount more than 0% in a given year, we wouldn't be required to contribute the 500,000 otherwise required by the fund balance policy.
Thank you. So you said, did I hear you correctly? Oh, well, I don't know if I heard you correctly. So I'll just ask the question. What was, are, are there any savings realized as a result of, of COVID, you know, the building being closed and other things? And if you said that, I apologize, but could you repeat that again?
Yeah. So there's miscellaneous savings. There are certainly additional costs as we in inclusion, including disruption to safe services. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head to share with you. I do know that we've received federal grants for infima reimbursement for certain costs related to COVID-19 and that the reimbursement has been increased from 75% of the costs to 100%, but those only apply to eligible costs. We have also received 1.4 million in coronavirus relief, local government grants and 5.9 million tentatively awarded for public safety, public health, payroll reimbursement. And so those will have a positive impact on our fund balance.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wood, I see your hand went down.
Jake answered my question when he was following up on the COVID question. Thank you.
Jake, please continue. Yeah. And so that pretty much summarizes the majority of my reports. You'll notice in the narrative above, there's an expenditure summary where you can see that all of the departments, the administration is continuing to look at ways to find savings for the city and improve our budgetary outlook as we start to focus on from 2021 to 2022 and beyond. You'll notice that when it comes to presenting the actual numbers, we have presented the budget report in several formats, which mostly reiterate the same information. And so the first sheet, there's a detailed revenue summary followed by a departmental summary of expenditures. We then go on to break down those expenditures by, in the broad budget appropriation detail where we break out personnel and operating lines. And lastly, by governmental summary, where we break out retirement, fixed benefits, IT expense and fleet from individual budgets. So you can see the direct costs that are associated with those departments. Thank you very much. All right. And then did anyone have questions on the vacancy report? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. And I'm not sure whether Jake can answer this or whether it's a question for the mayor. In looking at fire and particularly are we starting a new school for fire and if so, when?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, we, we have one going on right now. We have one with, I want to say it's 11 students that, that go in every, that go in every day on the south side. So that's happening right now. We're really excited about that program actually. And that was part of something that we've been working on for some time. And we expect to be part of the, the contract with the firefighters, which should very hopefully be to you in the next meeting or two. But that is going on right now and, and I encourage everybody to visit it. I've seen them twice or once, once in person with their parents and the pictures are great. So I'm happy to send you pictures if you'd like.
I think we're talking about the, the two different schools. I'm talking about the school that you go through the hiring process and then the firefighters go through the fire academy classes to graduate to, to go on and become sworn in firefighters. And when I look at the amount of vacancies that we have in the fire department, we all know that this creates overtime, which eats into that budget. So my, so my question is not for the high school students, you know, the explorer type group, but the other group. Do we have any information about that?
We do have, I know we, we do have a program where we hire people that are untrained and we put them through EMS firefighter one and firefighter two, firefighter two training. We work with, with LCC. So that is going on right now. I can't tell you exactly how many are in the program, but that is going on. Chief Martin talked to me about that recently. We also have a program where you can have those who are EMTs go in for training to be paramedics. We just filled 13 firefighter spots, maybe two, three months ago. And we expect to have more filled. Clearly we're budget conscious and, and waiting for the contract to be finalized. But we did just fill 13 spots a few months ago and I do expect that, that that'll continue. I'm happy to have Chief Martin brief you guys, brief you all on council, whether during the budget process or, or otherwise. But yes, I believe we do have folks in that programs. I know we're looking at how to do that as efficiently.
I know we're looking at how to do that as efficiently as possible. And yet getting folks who are untrained become trained firefighters. So yeah, that's, I know what's going on, but I couldn't tell you how many are in that program.
If we could get a number, I would appreciate that. My next question has to do with some revenue generating positions that haven't been filled. And they're not under contract, and it looks like it's been some time. We have an income tax examiner technician, which has been vacant since, well, we're coming up on a year on March 7th. And then we have another income tax examiner technician that was vacant since 2018. I also see some appraiser positions that are open. Can you give us an idea about hiring with those and where we are?
Well, I do know that the Treasury Department in particular has recently made, has done some hiring and plans to have all of their positions filled by the end of this year, or pretty close to it. And then I believe the assessor is planning on filling two of those positions, and one might remain unfilled, but I'd have to double check on their plans. Recently, in this past week, I've reached out to all department, all departments requesting that they account for every single one of their vacancies in their budget in order to say whether they plan on filling those vacancies, contracting them or holding on to them over the next of the following budget year. So we'll have a very clear image of what we expect as far as our vacancy factor and also the intention of individual departments towards staffing.
If I can add to that, councilwoman, Desiree has every intention of filling the spots that she has open, and that's, those spots are automatic waivers in the hiring freeze because they're revenue generators. So I mean, we're happy to again have Linda get you any information on that. With the assessors, I know we had someone on contract. And when we went into the emergency in March, that contract was eliminated. I know Sharon has all kinds of trouble trying to find qualified assessors. That has been a real problem. I want to say level three or whatever the level is that she needs that's required by the state, has been a tremendous problem for her to find. And I know that's a reason that some of those spots have been open. So we can certainly get you updates on both of those. But anything that's revenue generating especially is tremendously important to me. And I know to Desiree, and I thought that we may be in the field hiring those. I'd have to go back and look or we can get an update from Linda.
I realize this is a December report, so things could have changed by now. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley, I know you've been wanting to get in there. Hope you're muted, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had a follow-up about the fire, but I have a couple more. And I do appreciate that there is a hiring freeze. And so following up on what the mayor said, so the exception to any of the higher hiring freezes are only if it's revenue, would you say revenue generating?
Yeah, no, they're, my apologies if I can, if I can answer that question.
Yeah.
Yep, the executive order had two specific exemptions. One, if they were revenue generating, a second, if they were COVID-related. And then we put kind of a more general exception in for those positions that were deemed necessary to be filled by the HR director. So department directors will go to the HR director and express a need. She will bring me a recommendation and then I will approve or reject. So there are avenues, because there are just some jobs that, you know, it may not be revenue generating. It may not be COVID, but you know, the wastewater superintendent. At one point, we lost, you know, two of them, I believe, and we only had, we didn't have enough to run the wastewater plant, so that one got an exemption for operational reasons or, you know, if we have necessity, then we waive the hiring freeze. But it's done on a case-by-case basis unless it's revenue generating or COVID-related.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. And then my last question is, I think I heard you say you guys just recently hired 13 new firefighters in the last month or two.
Sorry, it wasn't the last month. If I said that, it was probably about four or five months ago.
And you have a number of them that are, as councilmember Wood said, a number of them that are vacant, including the fire chief and a captain. You know, we, I don't need to go over the history. I just wanted, you know, what steps are we taking to make sure that we get as diverse an applicant pool as possible in that area?
Sure, Chief Martin's doing quite a bit in that area, and Chief Mackey did quite a bit in that area previously. When we brought in the 13, I believe, I want to say 60% of it was, were candidates who fall in the diversity area, and we're pretty proud of that. You know, again, we're doing stuff with the school district. We want to make sure that we have Lansing kids that can get into our fire ranks. They're taking, you know, they're working with LCC. They're doing a lot of recruitment. Do a lot of recruitment in publications, in the New Citizens Press, the Adelante. So they're doing a lot of outreach, trying to bring in a diverse firefighter group. And part of it is what councilwoman Wood had mentioned, where we're trying to train people. All of these are part of the, kind of the plan that we talked about probably two years ago now that Chief Mackey had done in Florida and that Chief Martin is working on. You know, Chief Martin's on contract for a few months and will probably, I'm hesitant to go out to, for a permanent chief right now because to be honest with you, you know, this is an election year and it's very difficult to bring someone in when, when they don't know if they're going to be there the rest of the year. So we're looking at that. I'm going to look at the chief spot. Chief Martin doesn't want to be here permanently, so we'll continue to look at that and go out for a new chief when the time is right.
Thank you. And I think councilmember Wood, I think her, speaking to you, councilmember Wood, but I think what she was asking was, you know, how many people have you hired going through the Fire Academy? Do you become firefighters, not like the program that you have through the Lansing School District? But you, but you answered that question, but I just wanted to clarify that for her on her behalf, so.
Thank you, councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, President Spatafor. And this is just a follow-up to Mayor Shore. Chief Martin, doesn't his contract end in June or July? And does he plan on staying through until we find a new chief? Do you know that answer?
I think so. I do believe the contract, I'd have to go back and look. I don't remember when the contract ends. That might be right. I think you're right, councilman, June or July. And we'll have that conversation. We, you know, we haven't had the final conversation. So we will have that conversation. He's doing a great job so far, and I think there are some things he wants to see done. But again, I don't, he doesn't want the job, you know, full-time. He's not going to be here 20 years. So we haven't had that final conversation, and we will.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thanks. Not so much a question, but mentioned the past fire chiefs doing diversity work. We can't forget about Chief Tellaferro. I think he did some work also.
Yep, yep, he did. Yep, he sure, when we came in, several of the programs were his that he had been working on. So I just mentioned kind of the current one and the one we just had. But absolutely, Chief Tellaferro did significant work on bringing in a diverse fire force and definitely needs to be recognized. I agree completely.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Jake. I see no other hands, so I'm going to turn it over to Vice President Hussein. Before I do that, though, remind you, in your calendar appointment for this evening, everyone, or an email that Sheri sent this morning is the closed session links. It's my duty to remind you that closed session should be done without extraneous participants. It's, it is just a litigation update, but remember, this is the quarterly one. Recall that we try to do this quarterly, and I asked Sheri this year just to put them on our calendar quarterly so we didn't forget about them, because sometimes the business of the day trumps the quarterly requirement. So this is one of those, but still remind you that this is for councilmember ears and eyes only. So, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, get comfortable, folks. Pursuant to MCL 15.268 subsection E, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific pending litigation. An open meeting will have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the Lansing City Council concerning these issues. And the cases are as follows. Elizabeth Abdnauer versus City of Lansing and City of Lansing Treasury and Income Tax Office. Evelyn Arnold versus LPD and Fielder Benjamin Hindkey. Atkinson, Boyce, Israel, Odom, Odom, Randall, and Tellaferro versus City of Lansing Local 421 IAAF Shore, Weber, and Harkins. Burwell versus City of Lansing, Anderson, Liskovich, Kelly, Outerkirk, and Ridenhour. Mary Jean, Calkins, Darling, formerly Thompson Smith versus Amy Castillo, City of Lansing, Ingham County Board of Commissioners, Eric Schertzing, Caitlin Budzinski, Ingham County, and those 1 through 12. Lee Chen versus Lansing Police Department, Garcia and Fearnow. City of Lansing versus Angevine Holdings LLC. City of Lansing versus Michael Coleman. City of Lansing versus OCOF Nonprofit Housing Corporation. City of Lansing, Ed L versus Purdue Pharma, Ed L, in re, this is in regards to opiate litigation. Jane Doe versus City of Lansing, Lansing Public Schools, Lansing Board of Education, Yvonne Canul, Mark Coscarella, Donna Pole, Matthew Preby, Kimberly Petrow, and other identified Does. Jane Doe versus City of Lansing, Ed L. Doe versus Lindsey Howley. Election Integrity Fund, Lynda Lee Tarver. Kirkland Valentine, Jim Maroglia versus City of Lansing and Flint. Blakey Funchess, Ed L versus City of Lansing, Ed L. Fort versus the City of Lansing, Jason Jesse Gallegos. Gardner, Holsey Hill, Shantise Gonzalez. Gregory Hardy versus Lansing Police Department. Seigar, Candell, Jamil Bakri, Stephanie Kennedy, Aaron Bush, and Christie Childs. Jonathan Hardy, Anthony Scott Houlan versus City of Lansing. Green, Wyndham, Guerrero, Almond, and Warden. Jackson and Lansing Railroad Company versus South Street LLC. SC Environmental Services LLC. John Kendrick Sears, Norfolk Southern Railway Company. City of Lansing, Jocima Concrete Construction, Inc. versus Hamilton Mutual Insurance Company. Kyle Shaw Residential Properties LLC versus the City of Lansing. Michael Lynn versus the City of Lansing. Michael Lynn versus Mayor Andy Shore, Dave Purchase, and Eric Weber. OPV Partners, BW230 Real Estate Service Solutions versus the City of Lansing and Appeal. Jeffrey Overstrom versus the City of Lansing. The Estate of Spalding versus Eaton County, City of Lansing, Ingham County, Ed L. Sean Stafford versus Dave Klein and the City of Lansing. Andrew Taylor versus the City of Lansing, Schmidt, Blank, Wright, Cocan, Trasky, McBride, and Curtis. Trevino of Hydro World versus Blackburn, Allen, Carter, Shields, and the City of Lansing. James Ward versus Meredith Johnson and Walter Allen and McLaren Healthcare Corp. versus the City of Lansing.
You need a rest?
I do, thank you.
Okay, very good. So would, does anyone need the vice president to repeat that motion? Okay, sorry, I'm just having fun with you all this evening. My apologies. Councilmember Jackson, you have a question or a comment?
Just because I know that we always just vote on this, and I've been recently consistent voting against it. Just because as an elected public official, it's hard for me to just get for a council member's eyes and ears only, but I, you know, will follow the rules and everything, but that's one reason why I vote no every time. And sometimes we vote yes, and you know, what's the, you know, why do we vote yes? Sometimes no, sometimes mostly it's just me, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And I will note that, oh, nevermind. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1 to go into closed session at 6:15 PM.
Thank you. I'll please check in on your second link. Good evening, everyone at home. The city council was in closed session for the committee of the whole meeting. I'm coming back here to adjourn the committee of the whole at 7:16 PM and let folks know that city council will resume a little behind schedule at 7:25 PM. So I just adjourned at 7:16 the committee of the whole, and we will be back at 7:25 for the city council meeting this evening.